All right, let's call the meeting to order, the Rochester Planning Commission. Our first and only order of business this evening is a public hearing. And I will read the hearing notice on the draft Rochester zoning bylaw. Rochester Planning Commission will hold a public hearing on the draft Rochester zoning bylaw Tuesday, October 24th, 6:00 PM at the Rochester Town Offices. Community members may attend remotely using the following access information on Zoom. I guess I'll go through the whole thing here, Sandy, as part of the warning. The proposed draft bylaw covers all the lands in the town of Rochester. The purpose of this hearing is to take comment from the public on the draft bylaw so that the Planning Commission can consider these as it makes its final revision prior to sending this to the Select Board. Select Board will hold its own hearing later. Proposed bylaw will replace the current zoning regulations in their entirety. Bylaw is meant to further the purposes of the town plan and Act 24, Section 4302. Copies of the draft can be found at Town Clerk's Office during business hours or on the town website at the link provided in the hearing notice. Okay. Let's begin. I'll provide some introductory remarks and go over briefly where we made some changes in the document. Some of them are organizational, some of them are pretty substantive, and just to kind of pique your interest and open it up for questions from anyone in Zoom land or here visiting us. What I wanted to start with was this reading what the intent of our zoning is. And this is in the bylaw. "The intent of this bylaw is to promote the health, safety, and general welfare of the inhabitants, to protect the value of existing property, and ensure orderly growth in the town of Rochester by preventing the overcrowding of land by new development, promoting adequate sewage disposal, water supplies, transportation, schools, and other necessary town services. It is not the intent of this bylaw to supplant or replace any state or federal regulations. Any proposed element must also satisfy applicable state of Vermont regulations, Act 250, access management, etc." So we're here to take comments from the public, so any questions you have, maybe just as we're going, feel free, since we're a small group, feel free to raise your hand and at the moment, something pops into your mind and we'll get to your question. We started working on this revision back when we started revising the town plan, which was adopted by the Select Board, revised and adopted by the Select Board in 2020. At that time, we had a list of 12 or 13 things that we had seen in the town plan that we wanted to make sure synced with our zoning. And so we looked at that list and we started working on it ourselves. At the time, COVID hit and we learned how to do Zoom for a little while, and that wasn't the most effective, but we really started working on it earnest when we got into a contract with Two Rivers, two rivers out of Queechee Regional Planning Commission. And that's when we got the help of Sarah Wright, who's with us tonight. You know, our intent was originally just to hit those 12 or 13 points, but then, working with Sarah, we really saw that our almost 14-year-old zoning bylaw was pretty, was pretty out of date in a number of ways. And I'll talk about why we thought that. So we really want to thank Sarah for her work on this. Really outstanding, outstanding, really good at what she does, extremely thorough, and really coached us along the way as opposed to dictating anything that we needed to do. She let us know when we were not in line with the law, which we were grateful for, but we couldn't have gotten through this as effectively, efficiently without Sarah, so thank you, Sarah. And I also want to thank, you know, this volunteer board for the work they did on this month after month after month over the past few years to get us to this point where we have something to share with the community and then something to send over to the Select Board for their review and hopefully adoption. So we needed to revise our zoning because, as I said, it was 14 years old and some things have happened in that 14 years. State statutes have been changed and clarified. There's been a housing shortage nationwide and in Vermont and in Rochester. We've seen a couple of floods in that time that we first had our town zoning, so that also weighs in. We found lots of people wanting to move to Vermont and move to Rochester, making housing even more difficult, especially for young folks trying to get a start. And we saw opportunities, and there's another whole group that Sandy is part of that's looking at housing and how zoning affects housing in a five-town area.
Yes.
Yeah. So it was an opportunity to look at our zoning and see how it impacts opportunities for housing, increasing housing in our town. So what's changed? Some organizational things, the way it's going to lay out. It just flows a little bit better now than it used to. It's easier to find things. We've beefed up some sections and reduced some sections. One section we actually got rid of, our telecommunication and towers section, because everything in that is already covered by state statute, and our town plan has direction on telecommunications, which gives us an in in participating in those state permit processes. So we eliminated that section of the zoning. We looked hard at our districts. We still have the same six districts that we had before, Business Residential, the village, and Commercial Residential, which is the valley floor north to Hancock and south to LC, LCS?
Yes.
LCS. I always get that confused with ELCI, like Champlain International Fishing Area. Then the Ag Residential is the valley floor going at Route 73, and then every elevation above the valley floor is our Conservation Residential District. And then we've got our Aquifer Recharge District around the town, well, south of the town, as well as our flood hazard overlay, which allows us to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program. We made our districts a little more failure. We used to have a list of what's permitted, a list of what could be done conditionally in each district, and we changed that because you couldn't possibly think of all the things that were potentially conditional use in a district. So we have our list of permitted activities, permitted uses. Now we have a list of prohibited uses, things that we didn't want to happen in certain districts. And then everything else that comes to people's mind that can come to us for a conditional use permit. We just thought that was a better way of being open to different uses of the land. We couldn't possibly create a conditional use list of every imaginable, likely, and possibly beneficial use for the community. Housing being a big part of it, we increased housing density to allow and encourage for more multifamily units in some districts. We changed the minimum lot size in the village or Business Residential District. It was one-half acre, it's down to one-fifth of an acre in the village. And then we've got a density gradient, if you will, from the village on out to the valley floor, an increase in the density of units that can be put on a lot. Lot sizes are the same, one acre in the Commercial Residential, which is the valley floor north to Hancock and then down to LCS, and then two acres out Route 73, and then three acres up in the higher elevations. Those are the same unchanged.
Also from LCS to Stockbridge.
Oh, and LCS to Stockbridge is part of the...
Agres.
Agres, along with Route 73 Quarter. Some other things we did in general standards. So there are general standards, there are conditional use standards, and then there are special standards for particular conditional use activities. In the general standards, we added a few things. We said that you cannot create a lot that is accessed only by a town trail. Many of our town trails are former town roads, and people might think of them as a road, but they are not, by state statute, they are not roads by definition. And we require road frontage for a lot to be created, so it's really more a clarification of how town roads are treated in terms of creating lots. We added some standards about glare and lights and reflection. It was something that was brought up to us, and there's no harm in putting it in. We also added that you could have more than one principal building if you have a home industry on your lot. Typically, you can only have one primary building, principal building, and another building had to be smaller than that building. But if we want to encourage home industry, where if someone could put a workshop, we wanted it to be able to be larger and be as big as a principal building. Could be a barn or a workshop or what have you. And home industry would be something that someone could do under conditional use, so they would come to us and say, we've got this building, we're gonna do a home industry with it, and there may be conditions on something like that. We added some language about abandonment and discontinuance for building structures, homes that have been abandoned and not kept up, and maybe a health hazard or a public nuisance. It gives us an ability to approach those folks and say, look, we cleaned this place up, or if you need a little more time to fix it up, let us know, we can work with you. But it's something that gives us some teeth if there is an extended or discontinuous or abandoned building. We also added a streamside buffer in the areas outside of our valley flood plains. We noticed, we know that erosion doesn't just happen in the flooded areas in the valley bottom, that it happens on properties up in the hills, up in the mountains along the stream side. So we've added a, I'm gonna say 25-foot buffer where you can't build closer than 25 feet from a stream to prevent loss from erosion, streambank erosion. We did a few things in the conditional use standards. We listed all of, we had a set of conditional use standards that we would measure each proposal by, and they were a Rochester sort of list of standards. But we also added all the standards that were required under state statute. So we've now got a list of 14 standards, so when someone comes in for a conditional use permit, they know what they're getting into, they can review those and say, yeah, and they can address each of those in a conditional use hearing. Also in that conditional use standards, we expanded on clarified visual impacts and landscaping. We've always had the sort of the question of what is, we say, what's the terminology? We use screening, visual screening, or, you know, a buffer or a visual screen for some activity. And we didn't really explain what that needed to look like. Was that trees? Was it shrubs? Was it just grass in some cases? So we expanded and expounded on that piece. And then, as I mentioned, we set a, we have a special, a list of special standards, and these are standards for particular land uses. For home occupation and home industry, which we also defined clearly in our glossary, we clarified in the special standards the differences between temporary shelters, alternative accessory dwelling units, and cabins, really distinct things, and clarified that. We added standards for mobile homes, including setbacks and minimum lot size and green space. We limited primary retail, defined primary retail and secondary retail. We limited primary retail, which is only allowed in the village, to 4,000 square feet of available space for customers to shop in. And we added campgrounds in our special standards. We've had more and more requests for folks wanting to put sort of shelters or campgrounds on their land and invite people for short-term stays. And then we made quite a few changes in our definitions, clarifying some things and adding some definitions. That's a recap of a few years of work, so hope that maybe shed some light on what we've been doing and maybe any clarifications or questions you have about any parts of that. Love to entertain it. Yes, Martha?
Yes. Unfortunately, I can't write as fast as people can talk sometimes, and some of what you, I got a lot of what you said, but I didn't get everything, particularly in the beginning. Do you have any of that in an emailable form or not?
Not in an emailable form, but we can talk later and I can give you my notes or I can put a few things down for you.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to make sure that I don't miss anything. I think I've got most of everything, but I want to make sure that, you know, the information I put in the paper and the article is correct, as you know, as always.
Yeah, and Martha, it's recorded, remember? So you can go in and listen to my tirade there.
So who can I get that from?
Julie, Julie or Kristen. Call them first so that they make sure that it's been downloaded, but yes.
Okay, the only thing is, I had an issue with the, I can't do stairs and I had an issue with the lift, so I'm...
The other possibility is Orca. Mr. Orca, when is your, when does your thing get posted?
Probably about a week at the latest.
Okay. Well, if I have any questions, I'll check in with you, Dan, if you're going to be around for the next few days probably.
Yeah.
And the new language is on our website, is on the town website, so you can read it or anybody, you know.
Okay, check the town website, that's a good idea. Thank you, Sandy.
And you can encourage people to read it.
Thank you, Sandy. I appreciate you. Okay, I'll mute myself again, thank you.
And Martha, you don't have to come into the office to get that recording. It should be posted somewhere on the town website for you to just pull it off.
Oh, okay.
I'm hoping.
All right. I will check that.
Or they can mail it to you, mail you a document.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
So you talked about visual screening and landscaping and a new standard. Is that something where so-called junkyards would come into play?
Definitely, yeah.
Well, it's a standard for conditional use.
Right.
So she's asking if somebody has, if somebody has a messy, it's not something that we just sort of call up if somebody has a messy house, which is what I think she's asking.
No. If someone came to us and said, we want to start a salvage yard or have a, then we would have a conditional use hearing and we may put conditions on that use, and that's where it would come into play. Someone that has something currently in use, the new regulations don't apply to something that's already in use, unfortunately.
Okay. 25-foot buffer on streams, considering the floods, how do you define a stream? Because those innocent streams became rivers.
Yeah, and I think we use the USGS map. Wherever there's a blue line on the US Geological Survey map would be a stream. Let me double-check that while I have, if anybody know that.
It was 25 feet, right?
I'm gonna check if it's 25 or 35.
We talked about it.
Yeah. And that was something we went around and around about, because there are a lot of little streams, and that's a lot of land that...
We've got it here on the screen.
Oh, you got it?
So USGS survey map streams will have a minimum building setback of 50 feet horizontally from top of bank. No ground disturbance within 35 feet measured horizontally from the top of bank.
Do you define the width of the stream? I can't see it.
No, so it is measured from the top of the bank of the stream, that's when you start counting the distance.
And how old, how wide is the original stream before you start measuring back from the center of it?
It's not the center, it's the edge of the bank.
The edge of the bank. The edge of the bank. Yeah, so wherever that is at that time, that's where you start measuring from, because yes, that can change over time, but wherever it is at that point in time, that's where you start measuring from.
I'm thinking of all those little babbling works that suddenly became roaring rivers. Somebody would look at that and say, that's not worth a 25-foot buffer.
Well, it says also that if on existing loss of one acre or less, the building setback and no ground disturbance zone are reduced to 25 feet from the top of the bank. So if you have lots of room, it's 35 feet; if it's an acre or less, it's 25 feet.
The impetus for this, just like other floodplain management, is that when we have floods and there's damage, you know, the community pays for part of the restoration of, I forget what the town portion of road repairs and things is after a flood. Do you have any? It probably depends.
It depends how current we are with certain standards, like 10% or 15%.
Yeah. For, I mean, for private homes, I think a lot of folks, I don't know, private homes, there's not that same cost share from the town. Martha?
Excuse me, I forgot to ask before. Sarah Wright, what is her position? Is she from the state or... Two Rivers. Two Rivers. Two Rivers. Okay, okay, thank you. Thank you very much, sorry.
So in this, are you dealing at all with short-term housing?
We have one, we deal with it in one way, in the areas outside of the village and the valley bottom. In Conservation Residential, it is a conditional use. So someone wants to do a short-term rental on their property, they come in and they propose it to us, and we now look at all the conditions that we have for conditional use, noise, dust, parking, vibrations. Oh, they may not apply, but they're all there.
And we adopted the state definition of short-term rental, which is more than 14 nights in a calendar year. So if you, you could do short-term rental for 10 nights and it doesn't get triggered under state law, so we just piggyback state law on the definition. With respect to any kind of regulation, we have been advised that the sensible way to do that is by a Select Board ordinance and not in the zoning that has taken us whatever it is, five years to fix. An ordinance can be tweaked on a much more timely basis, and I think one of the things that we will be talking about when we finally, after we take a breath, is thinking about whether we want to make some recommendations to the Select Board. I will tell you from the conferences that I've been to, the minute that you step into regulation, it starts to get really murky really fast. The hardest thing is the registration. So the first thing you want to know is who's doing it. So you make people register. Well, who's gonna, who's going to manage that? Well, what towns do is they hire a company to do that. $35,000, thank you very much, to manage your database. So, you know, how much money do we want to put into this and what do we want it to look like? So we want it, you know, so we decided that we would punt the regulation question to another day, because it really does start to, you know, is it, you know, do you have to live there? You know, how does a ski house work? You know, one of the reasons that we did what we did with the uses is that we were trying to make it a little less appealing to buy a property in North Hollow for the purpose of renting it out as Airbnb. That was, that, you know, if you already, we have a lot of, we have a lot of properties already in town that do short-term rentals, but we wanted to not put a red flag on, put up a welcome flag that said, yes, buy every house in town, you know, company from Colorado and rent them out.
So we'll be encouraging the Select Board to take up that topic.
To take it over.
Yeah. I hope with a lot of community input, because it's a hot topic.
Yeah, because that begins to spell the definition of community.
Yeah.
But as someone pointed out the other night at the housing meeting, then there's all of the business that those people bring into town, and what does that do for our economy overall? So there's, you know, there are trade-offs on both sides. The restaurants, the grocery store, the...
Does this get involved with fees or is that a Select Board decision? Fees for different...
Permits.
Oh, for permit, we did not, yeah. There are no fees associated with zoning permits, just for building permits, and we, so we haven't touched that.
I think you do have language in here about violation, fees for violations, but it doesn't get specific. It's the amounts are to be set by the town, but not necessarily in this ordinance.
Is there, is there a period of time, if you've taken out a building permit, is there a period of time in which you have to have it completed?
It's three years, I think.
Yes, that's part of the discontinuous, this issue.
Does it have to be completed in three years?
Yeah.
It's like the front doorstep.
Yeah. See if I can find that real quick.
Sarah's working on it too. Three years.
Three years. So I can try to read it for folks in back. A permitted structure that is, A, is not substantially complete more than three years after the issuance of its zoning permit, B, is unoccupied and is either deemed uninhabitable by the health officer or deemed a fire hazard by the fire chief or a state fire marshal, C, due to disrepair, lacks any major structural element customary to the type of the building involves, like a roof or windows or water supply, or lastly, D, is a contorting structure that lacks any major old structural element due to damage and no repair work has been undertaken within one year of the damage, shall be considered abandoned for the purposes of this bylaw, and that abandoned structures shall require new zoning permits and approvals as applicable under this bylaw. Does that clarify?
One of the things we struggled with over several months was the idea of providing housing opportunity by putting two homes on one lot. Yeah, you know, a number of people had come to us and said, we'd like to build a cabin or a small house for Aunt Betty or for my kids or, and the way we interpreted our current zoning was that we couldn't allow them to do that unless it was attached to the house, attached to the existing structure. But new clarification from the state allows that accessory dwelling unit to be detached and separate from the home. So it does, we're excited that we do now have an opportunity for folks to add another home, smaller. So it does, we're excited that we do now have an opportunity for folks to add another home smaller than the existing home onto their existing lot, if the lot's big enough, um, to allow for, for more housing. And usually it was folks that wanted to do something for family members, the requests that we got.
So you said if the lot is big enough?
Well, accessory, an accessory dwelling unit within, within your home is protected under state law. So any, any property can have an accessory dwelling unit. Um, but what, what he was talking about was, was that we had, we had people who really wanted to set up, have a cottage, let's say a cottage. And, and so we, we looked, we, we spent a lot of time looking at how that would, what that would look like. But that is also, and it, it, if it meets, if it meets the requirement, which I think we said is fifty, uh, not more than fifty percent of the foot, the, um, square footage of the dwelling, of the principal dwelling, or twelve hundred square feet, whichever is larger, um, and th- then, then you get to do it.
And that's, that's a building that falls under the accessory dwelling unit, but you've also allowed for more than one principal building per lot, um, in the cases of, um, home industry.
Right, right.
So, so the accessory dwelling unit has very specific definitions that the town has laid out, which also fall under state statutes. We'd have to make sure that you're meeting if you're gonna build on the same lot.
But the, the, the state, the state guarantees you up to thirty percent of the, of the square footage and we increased it to fifty percent. So, so, so ours is a little more generous than the state. And the, um, and the reduction in lot size in the village, um, is also, also reflects recently pa- recently enacted state law. We also thought, we thought it was a good idea, but, um, that this is, this is where the services are. So this is where we want concentration to be.
Um, could I ask a question?
Yes.
Um, unless I'm confused, the original exist, accessory dwelling unit, would you count that as like an apartment that's in, say, the upstairs of your, of one home? That someone lives downstairs and they have an apartment upstairs or whatever, or in the back of the house or whatever.
Yeah.
But what you're going, what your new reg- regulation for, if I understand correctly, is for a separate building on the same lot. Like you said, that, you know, a lot of people looking for possibly someone for their, for their family or whatever.
Yeah.
But it's okay now because the, the state is allowing that, so the town is also?
Yes.
But there, but both of the things that you described are accessory dwelling units. The upstairs apartment, the garage apartment, the, the cottage, all of those are accessory dwelling units.
But originally there wasn't, you weren't allowed to have a separate building on, on, on the same lot, right?
Correct.
Okay, but now you are, okay. All right, thank you.
Under, under, under our proposal?
Yes, under our draft.
Which is not, which is not, which is not in, in place at the moment.
Okay, am I, am I correct that is the town voting on this at all or what?
No, um-
Well, the select board.
Yeah, the select board, not a town vote, but, um, the select board.
Okay. So the select board will vote up?
The select board will have a hearing in November, um, and then they'll, they'll vote to adopt it.
They'll have, they'll have their own, this is our warned hearing. When we're, when, when we made whatever changes we, we are inclined to make after comments tonight, we will get it to the select board and they will warn their own hearing, at which point they, they can adopt it. We hope they will adopt it.
Okay, thank you.
That's it, you have a question?
Well, are there regulations about accessory or accessory apartments in a, in a multi-story building? And access and egress, are there, are there requirements within the zoning for that? Like a fire escape, for instance? You decide to put a-
That's not-
An apartment in your three-story house.
That's not-
Does that fall into it?
It's not in our zoning that we don't require any, anything like that in our zoning if you're gonna put in a, um, an apartment or accessory dwelling unit. But I imagine if it's rented, that there are regulations, anyone know?
Yes.
So if you're, you're renting-
It's considered a public building, if you are renting, that's considered a public building. So you have to go through the state fire safety permitting process.
But if it's a private building?
It's still, if you are renting it out, it is considered a public building for the purposes of state fire safety permitting processes, yep. Which doesn't get run through the town, that's a separate state process.
So theoretically, uh, an Airbnb situation would trigger the fire and safety inspections.
Exactly, which a lot of folks don't realize, yep.
Julie or Sandy, you wanna add anything else to our, about our discussion and our learning over the past?
Thousands of years.
Or Doon, Doon's here.
Is there anything that the, the board feels that they wish they could have addressed and didn't get to include in, in this?
There are no changes to the flood rules, floodplain rules, because we understand that FEMA is about to change the ground rules yet again. Um, I don't, they're pretty, what we have right now is pretty, um, uh, pretty restrictive. So I don't, I'm, I'm not sad about that, but, but it, that is, that is a part of the, of the document that was not changed.
Because we have to change it when FEMA does, correct?
Right.
One of the challenges we face at many towns is the, um, development of our forests and farmlands, trying to maintain a, a working landscape. It's, we found it difficult to work with that. You know, things like, um, town trails, you know, they go into the, up into the hills and if we allow the town trail to be accessed for a subdivision, um, then it could have opened up, it could open up a lot of, of land for, um, forest land, um, for, for development, for, you know, um, three acre lots. So it's, um, it's a challenge to find out, find a way to do that. And many, many places, uh, well-developed land trusts that can conserve important blocks of forest land for, uh, forest or agriculture, uh, we don't have that resource, so we're, we're challenged by that. And I slowly see, you know, that ag and forest land getting whittled away, if you will. You know, we try and keep the, the, the development, um, out of there by having, you know, larger lot sizes. But, yeah, it's private land and they can, folks can do what they want. But we'll, if we continue to see the pressures of, um, folks moving to Vermont, it's gonna continue to be an issue. We're not really able to address it.
You did deal with something with trails.
We did, we did. Our, our, as more of a clarification, um, our bylaw says you must have, um, road frontage, X, X amount of road frontage to create a lot.
Or, 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 or an easement to a town road.
Or to a town road, right. And, and a town trail is not legally a town road. So, um, we clarified that, um, by saying you can't make a lot with only, only access by a town trail. Anything we didn't get to, Julie, that you?
I think your synopsis was excellent, by the way, all the, very well done. The town trail one, uh, was the Jerusalem fellow that started that whole conversation, correct? Yeah. The one that bought all the, the huge tract of land there and had no way of getting onto it. Is he the one logging right now up there?
Don't know.
Yeah, he's putting in a road.
I think so.
Putting in a road, okay, that's why I was wondering if he was putting in a road, okay.
Right, straight down.
From Jerusalem, right? Or from?
No, from Bethelmountain.
Oh, from Bethelmountain.
So did he buy a, a, a right of way from somebody?
Yeah, or actually, um, a small piece of land, yeah, no, just a right of way.
Yeah.
Good work.
So Lois, when you were talking about that creek, the streams, did you want it larger? I mean, this is a time to change that if you were really concerned about that. Well, I understand the distance from the bank. Right, the top of the bank. Yeah, the top of the bank, I understand that part. Right. But I wanna go, what actually defines a stream? How wide does this ribbon of water have to be before it's classified as a stream?
Oh.
As opposed to a spring runoff? That may become permanent, but it's basically just a spring runoff. That never drives up and- That never drives up. Right.
Yeah, and I, and I think that, um, is, is difficult to define. But what, the tool we have to go by is the, um, the maps that U S Geological Survey puts out. And if it has, if it's a blue line, then they consider it a map. I mean, a, a stream.
How old is the map?
Um-
Well, it just, it just says U S Geological Survey mapped streams.
Yeah. Don't know.
So I would say current, but, or most, the most current you can get your hands on. Uh, you know, if you came to us with a nineteen-hundred map, we might question it. But what, what, what would you like to see? I guess that's the question that Julie was asking.
Because I'm dig- digging deeper, haha, to, to really determine. All of a sudden, somebody has a stream of water going across their property and then somebody comes along and says, okay, you gotta have a twenty-five foot buffer on that stream. And then someone says, that stream wasn't there four years ago.
Well, well, number one, keep in mind that everything that we're talking about here applies to the circumstances at the time that somebody applies for a permit. So, you know, you build your house and, and, and the river is fifty feet away and the river moves towards your house. Nobody's gonna come to you and say you have to tear your house down, if that's the concern, okay? It's, it's, it, but, but, but it, but if you, but if you wanted to expand your house, uh, you know, put an extension on, that, it might, that might trigger. Because at that point, you're asking for a new permit and then where's the river would, would be relevant.
And if, um, someone wants to, um, build a house and, and the zoning administrator would look at a map and see where the house is and where, if there's a blue line on the USGS map. And if there's no blue line on the USGS map, then, then they're good. I could see it get a little bit tricky, uh, the USGS maps have a solid blue line and then when the streams become intermittent, they only flow, then it gets dotted line. And I don't know, I think we're probably talking about just solid blue lines and not, not intermittent temporary streams.
Yeah.
It doesn't say that, does it?
Well, it just says mapped streams.
Yeah.
I would argue that it, that it, that an intermittent line is not a mapped stream, if that-
You could argue that. Well, I went to a hydrologist.
It's a stream in April.
Yeah.
Right.
Um, but you know, so, so there's, there's, there's two issues here. One is, when do you say no to a permit? And the other is, when do you say, hey guys, this isn't a very good idea, you might wanna rethink it? And, and oftentimes, when, when Doon is working with people, it's, it's the second, it's the second part of the conversation that you're having. You know, it's, this isn't gonna work very well, um, so. Cause it gets wet in April.
In your basement.
Yeah.
So that third line says no home gardens, no ground disturbance. So, so if somebody wants to, um, put in a water garden next to the stream, they can't do it.
Would it be helpful if I read out the whole text? Would that be useful for people?
I'm trying to.
So, USGS mapped streams will have a minimum building setback measured fifty feet horizontally from top of bank and no ground disturbance within thirty-five feet measured horizontally from top of bank. For home gardens, the no ground disturbance zone is reduced to twenty-five feet measured horizontally from top of bank. Recreational motorized vehicles must not be parked within thirty feet from top of bank, regardless of lot size. On existing lots of one acre or less, the building setback and no ground disturbance zone are reduced to twenty-five feet from top of bank.
So I won't let water livings close my stream. Were we following state regulations or not?
It might turn into not made.
No. Yeah, we did look at some other towns.
Right.
And the, the, the gist of this is that we want there to be a, ideally a forested buffer along the stream banks, cause that's what keeps the, the stream bank from eroding, so, um. I'm gonna say a little bit about, um, campgrounds. Quite a bit of discussion around that. We've had requests for things like campgrounds with, uh, teepees and yurts and tents and things like that. We looked at what the state regulations are and the state says anything with four or more camping sites is considered a campground and requires, um, um, water septic, um, permits. So, um, we said, you know, smaller than that, um, well, that size and even smaller than that, um, is a conditional use in, in the town. So it'll allow someone to have a couple of campsites on their, on their property. Two, three campsites, even four campsites. But when it gets larger, we're requesting more space and more setbacks. But they still have to go for a state permit, uh, for water or, or sewer, or, um, a larger camp, campground.
And is that a state law? Get that-
It is, campgrounds, yep.
Okay. Doon, do you have any questions for your upcoming meeting with this? No.
No, come on.
Sarah's waiting for a question. Uh, to touch on the, uh, second home on a lot that is the same size or larger, we settled on needing a subdivision. Correct?
Yeah, in effect, if someone wanted to put another-
Versus a smaller accessory dwelling.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we debated that for quite a while.
Yes.
And, and decided that, um, that the accessory dwelling rules were, were good enough to take care of most of the co- most of the inquiries that we'd had. Um, and that, that anything more ambitious than that probably should be, should, they should just subdivide the property. It was quite, it was quite a debate we had.
It was.
It was.
But back and forth on that for a while.
Mm-hmm.
Is the state going to require a, a separate septic?
So, so-
On those accessory dwellings?
Um, you have to have, you, you have to cover all your bedrooms.
Yeah.
However you do it. So if you, if you have a house that has four bedrooms and you carve out, you know, one of the bedrooms and put, and have a kitchen with it and that's, you already, you already, assuming you already have a system that was built for four-
Then that's okay.
For four bedrooms, you're covered. If you are, if you're gonna keep your four-bedroom house and add two more bedrooms in a cottage, then yes, you have to, you have to accommodate the, the two more bedrooms. Now, that's, and, and so that's one of the reasons we've been asking so many questions about the town's septic. Because, because there are certain parts of the village where, where we could easily expand. There are other parts where you can't, but some of us have a lot of grandfather bedrooms, so. But we have to figure out, we have to figure out what's grandfathered. That's the old one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was just looking at the names.
I know, I, I, I thought, what is that?
Thousands of years ago.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, God.
No more questions from anyone? Doesn't appear to be, does it?
No.
Should we close the hearing?
I think.
I would suggest that, but...
Anything else, Martha? Any, any questions?
Um, now, right this minute, if, if at some point before I put this together for next week's paper, I could talk with you for a few minutes, that would be helpful, just to make sure I clarify things correctly.
Sure, okay.
But thank you very much for all your hard work, everybody, I appreciate... Is this the entire committee, the three of you, and with advice by Sarah Wright?
No, we're missing Greg Wright, this was Dave Curtis, and Christine...
Christine Mayer.
Christine Mayer.
Okay, so, okay, thank you.
We are, we are short a member right now, so we're, we're recruiting. If you want to help us recruit, we'd be grateful. The, the first criterion is that the person be under fifty.
Well, we might want to modify for that. We're gonna modify, uh... Yeah.
And, and Dune was part of our group too, as, as our select board person, forming this.
Dune's executive.
Great.
No, we're gonna modify that age requirement, yes.
Younger. Under forty, better, better still.
We're trying to get some young people involved with the town, but...
You need to.
Sure.
Because they're the ones that don't want to step, step up.
That's why.
Well, we need, we need, we need their energy and we need their perspective.
Hey, I might have been forty when I started this.
Well, me too.
I always get a grief.
All right, if there are any more, no more questions, we'll...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Very much.
Thanks for...
Yes, thank you for your interest.
Joining us today. Yeah. With that, we'll close our hearing. And...
Thank you, everybody, for your hard work.
Thank you, Martha.
Thanks, Martha.
Thanks.
Thank you all for coming.
Yes.
Yeah, thanks Nancy. Thanks, Lois.
You're already here. No, you were here, so it was, might as well...
Pile all over to the record.
I think since I was at a select board meeting last night, and I've got another meeting tomorrow night, I am going to leave. Thank you.
All right, have a good night, Martha.
Yes.
Well, will you be able to be at the select board's hearing to answer questions?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay.
I guess you do.
I was hoping there'd be more than me, but...
It's the twenty-seventh?
Well, we...
That's, we're hoping, yeah?
We, we, we decided when you should do it.
That would be, that would be a good timeline to...
After Thanksgiving.
Yeah, that, that...
That'll be difficult.
So what we, Dune, it has to be in the paper fifteen days ahead, which is, which is the really tricky piece. So, we figured if we got it to you right now, this week, that you could talk about it Monday night and make a decision, and, and then figure out, you know, schedule it.
Monday night, the thirteenth.
That, no, Mon, this Monday, this, that you could talk about it, this coming Monday.
They don't have a meeting.
They just had a meeting last night.
Oh, you're done?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay.
So the thirteenth?
Doesn't mean that we can't set the, the hearing, we don't have to set that at a public meeting, do we?
Uh, I don't, I have no, I don't think so, I don't think so. So, well, it just, it needs to get in the paper, it needs to get in the paper in time for it to be at least fifteen days before you, your hearing. So we thought that would be the second meeting.
So it's thirteen, twenty-seven of November, and then you go into December?
Yeah, we'd like, we'd like...
On the eleventh of December.
We'd really like you to do it in November. So here, here's the problem. Two Rivers, under whatever agreement they have with the state, has to wrap this up this calendar year. And so that's...
They want to have a special meeting.
That's why, well, that, but I, if you could do it, I'd turn, at that, that, that November twenty, whatever, is twenty, twenty seven.
Why does it have to be that far?
They gotta get the fifteen days.
'Cause, 'cause it has to get in the paper.
No, I know, but why couldn't they put it in, like, right off?
You could have, you could have a meeting there to warn a special meeting.
To have it earlier.
You don't even need, have, need to have a meeting to warn a special meeting.
Right, that's what I mean, why couldn't they?
But, we can, I, I'm not sure we have to have a meeting to set that. This is basically, we'll be warning, we just set a warning, just like we warn a meeting. Why we, why we have to meet in to warn a meeting.
No, but my thought, why does it have to be way up to the twenty-seventh?
Well, because...
If they don't need a meeting.
Fifteen days.
No, it's actually longer, I just want to make sure it's very clear that there, yes, there's a fifteen-day warning period, but there has, there's a mandatory thirty-day wait, ward, waiting period between when the planning commission submits to the select board, and then you get to have your first hearing, so...
So they could do, if we gave it to them tomorrow, they could schedule their hearing thirty days from then?
Correct.
Right?
Yes.
But do you have to present it to us at a formal meeting, or can you just...
You, you don't have to have any sort of formal presentation.
That could be a phone call from Sandy to you.
So, my preference, so, so we had, we made, we made a few recommended changes that I got to you last month.
Yeah.
I would like to see those incorporated, they were mostly, mostly nets and...
I would need the whole planning commission to concur on those.
We did.
We did, okay, yeah, it's already...
Yeah, yeah, we are, we are, we already agreed on all of those.
Awesome.
Yeah. And, so, with those changes, I think, I mean, there were, there were, there were only a couple that were marginally substantive, they were mostly nets.
Yeah, that's a good hearing, if anybody needs to reference that.
So, um, if you could, if you could, if you could incorporate those, and I guess send it, send that to, send that to Dan, and then, and then Dan can forward it to you.
Thirteen, thirteen, okay, so it's too soon to do the thirteen?
Yeah, and I probably won't be here for that one.
Okay, so it has to be the twenty-seventh? Okay, that's what it is, 'cause they, they...
Well, well, and anyway, she just said it has to be thirty days.
Thirty days.
Okay.
So...
Yeah.
So it's got to be this week.
Well, I'm sure it'll be...
It's gotta be by Friday.
It'll be, yeah, that'll happen, yeah.
What, what, what I gave, what we gave Sarah to put in last month was, was really little stuff.
Right, yeah, so that will definitely happen by Friday, so...
Sarah, do you give them the, the official, um, warning?
I'm happy to prepare a warning notice, if that would be helpful to the town.
You guys have to get it to the paper.
That would help Julie.
You guys have to get it to the paper, though, she doesn't do that, 'cause she doesn't want to pay the bill.
Which, that could be...
Well, we don't have it in the budget, though.
No, no, I'm just, I'm just, you could, you could send it and say, send the, send the bills to Rochester, that's what I, I mean, but, but that's okay.
No, they're just saying for Julie.
I think it makes more sense, no, so what, um, so I think, I think what we do is, you make the changes, you send it to Dan, and then Dan forwards it to, to, to Dune.
By Friday, and then you can have the meeting on the twenty-seventh, which is the thirty days.
And Sarah's going to prepare the, the actual...
The actual words, yeah.
wording.
Which she'll give to Julie.
Yeah, and act, and that does not have to be done by Friday.
Right, right, 'cause we have a leeway, right.
Yeah, that doesn't need thirty days.
Friday, okay, for you, Sarah, document those changes?
That the planning board has given the proposal to the select board, is there anything, just like, you mean, dated email sent in it to Julie to distribute to the select board, would that do the job?
Yeah, that's probably a good idea.
Say that again, sorry.
To document that the, the recommendations were submitted from the planning board to the select board thirty days before our hearing. So, it would be if we're just, um, a formal email dated, saying that here's our planning board, here's the, um, send it to Julie to distribute to the, um, the select board, that way it's in the records that, that...
Correct.
With a C, with a C to Dune.
And then she takes care of all the postings, including in the papers.
Well, the, so, so the, the wording of the, of the, the wording of the warning is tricky. So Sarah's gonna draft that, and, and she and Julie will figure out who's doing what. I did, I did actually end up putting them up around town, 'cause I, I understood that Julie was gonna do that, and then realized that hadn't happened, so I ran around and did that, and I got about fifteen days, so that was, um, but, um, so it's important that Julie understands that those, that they have to, that the, the three postings need to be fif- fifteen days out. It's not like the regular, a regular select word.
Yep.
Uh, but that's... That's everything, right?
It could be posted, I mean, just soon as we get it, we know that we're gonna have it.
It can go out, it just doesn't have to be fifty, it could be twenty days.
Well, oh, oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
There we go.
Do you think you're gonna take action on the twenty-seventh after you close the hearing, or will you need to push that out to another?
It depends on who shows up and complains.
We have some interesting and compelling questions at the hearing.
Okay.
Depends on who knows about it.
Yeah, right.
That's why we want to do it in November.
I missed last week's hurrah, did the article get in?
Yes, I have it, and I, and I copied it, I, I cut it up.
Did you frame it?
No, but I saved it with the date line.
Oh, good.
Most important.
Very important.
Yes.
Yes, and that, should ideally, all that documentation needs to be kept by the town staff in a folder marked "Adoption Process", so that if you have any questions, you can go back. So I have some documentation too, from our original submittals that I need to send over to Julie, if I have that.
Okay.
And then, following adoption, assuming that the select board wants to adopt this document, the state has instituted a new requirement for a report that has to be prepared post-adoption. We're still figuring out exactly what the state wants, but Two Rivers is happy to write that report for your review after we get through that hurdle later on down the road.
Does that have to be done by the end of the year also?
Uh, no.
Okay, oh.
Okay. All right, sounds like a plan, team.
Good night.
Good night, Nancy.
Good work.
Thank you, ladies.
Does that mean we can adjourn? And does it mean we can cancel tomorrow?
Just before, before we do.
Oh, 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 no, we can't.
I just want to clarify, so I have your edits, thank you so much, that's super helpful, all of it, and thanks for your careful eye on everything. Um, I just want to clarify, contractor yards, you, you would like them to be permitted in the commercial agricultural district, but conditional in the agricultural residential district, does that sound correct to you?
Say that again, Sarah.
Permitted in the commercial agricultural district, but conditional in the agricultural residential district.
I think that's right.
Per, if we permitted, means there's no, no conditions.
No conditions, right, in, in, in commercial.
Yeah, I'm not sure that's a good idea.
Oh, I thought that, well, that's what you said you wanted, so...
Well, I was wrong.
Well, no, what you, what, what you came and saying was it's not permitted in...
Anywhere, right.
That was, that was, that was your concern.
Yeah.
And so our, our compromise was to say, okay, then let's say it's okay in commercial. That was, that was, that was...
Why wouldn't it be conditional everywhere? We didn't want to do that?
And we didn't have it conditional anywhere.
Oh.
So, somewhere, I mean, in the village is appropriate.
No, it's, it's, it's conditional everywhere. It, what, was it prohibited? Oh, it was prohibited?
Sorry, no, no, yeah, okay, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna read where we're at right now, so that we can all get on the same page. So, it is, these are contractor yards, um, yes, contractor yards are prohibited in the business residential district. They are currently conditional in the, um, commercial agricultural district. They are currently conditional in the agricultural residential district as well. Yes.
Makes sense to have them, right?
And they are prohibited in the conservation residential district, so you've got...
Two conditional uses.
Two conditional uses, correct.
You had, you had looked at the grid, I think.
I think the grid might be inaccurate, I'm sorry.
Okay, that, well, that, that's...
Looking at that earlier, I was like, this is not accurate.
That's where that came from, then.
Yeah.
Because he looked at the grid, and he got concerned that we weren't allowing them anywhere. I think that's how this...
Well, the grid actually says that they are, they are permitted in commercial agricultural and conditional in agres, which is not actually true currently as the language stands. It is conditional in both the commercial agricultural and ag residential districts. They are prohibited in business residential and conservation residential districts.
So is that grid going to be corrected?
Yes, definitely. But to whatever you want it to be, so that's why I try to clarify.
Yes, but what, but what do we want? Dan, this was your issue, so you called it...
So we have the conditional and, um, commercial ag and, um, commercial residential and ag residential.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Um, and prohibited elsewhere.
Village.
And village and conres.
Yeah.
That is correct.
Yeah, I like that. I think a contractor yard is something that might potentially need screening or noise and things, so...
We want to have some control.
Some conditions, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna leave it as is then?
Okay.
Okay.
And, and, oh, um, there was that big question about, um, childcare and group homes, and what it meant for something to be permitted. And permitted means that it needs a permit. And, and I had a conversation with Sarah, and she said that we had been consistent in that. So even though it reads funny, and, and by the way, the reason that we had, that we have that funny language is because it tracks state statute. So, yeah, so you can thank, you can thank legislative doctors for that, so, um...
And I'm gonna add that we're consistent state statute, because you...
Yeah, okay, yeah, 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 so that was our, that was our, that was our compromise there.
Oh, the other one we had
Yeah.
was, uh, heavy industry.
Yes, yes.
We had prohibited everywhere.
Oh, yeah, delete from prohibited, I said, in, in commercial ag. I put that on the list, didn't I?
That's my note here, yes, that you would like it to be, I assume, conditional in commercial agricultural.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, the only note that came up for me this evening, um, was the question about intermittent streams, about riparian buffers applied to intermittent streams.
Right.
Um, as you pointed out, Sandy or, or Dan, that, you know, right now, the language just says, uh, USGS mapped, um, streams, so we're not distinguishing. I think that a fair point was raised, that, you know, during flood situations, those streams, those intermittent streams become quite dangerous.
And they're real streams in the spring, I mean, they're not little dogs, right?
Right.
And we still have a current one, still this year, because of all of it, which is usually dry.
Right.
So it's just, I don't know where you'd go from there, but...
So...
So we, would we say then both permanent and intermittent?
Well, well, it just, it just says, it just says, it just says...
Streams.
Geological, maps, streams showing on a geological map, so, you know, I would, you know, we can argue it both ways, but, but they, but they both show on the map.
Right.
Yeah.
I think, I think our language is fine.
Okay.
Yep.
That was good.
Okay. Okay.
Was there anything else that was raised this evening that you feel you have to take action on?
I didn't think so.
No, I didn't think, uh, there was anything substantive.
There were, there were questions of what we meant, um, but, um...
I didn't notice anything else.
No, I didn't, I didn't hear anything that needed change.
No.
Nancy Woolies, about, um, the apartment in a house, that was just a clarification, right?
That was, that was about, that was about, well, so, I didn't, at the housing thing I was at the other night, there were people who actually do apartments, and, and, yes, we have building codes in Vermont, they are not enforced unless you're gonna rent, and then you damn well better follow building codes.
Oh, good.
So, that's, and, and you do get, you know, you are, you are what's called a public building. Public building doesn't mean it's owned by the public, public means it's open to the public, or, you know...
So who comes and does that type of inspection?
Well, the fire marshal is one, and, and Labor and Industry, or whoever they are.
So there's real people that go around and...
There are actual people, yeah, yeah, they're not, they're, they're, they're stretched pretty thin, but...
Yes, okay.
But in the event of a, in the event of a complaint, they show up.
Right.
And you do have language in the bylaw that specifically calls that out to people's... And you do have language in the bylaw that specifically calls that out to people's attention, to say that, you know, a state building permit is required for public buildings, which includes short-term rentals, any space that's being rented to the public, um, and that you need to coordinate with the State Department of Public Safety, Division of Fire Safety, specifically.
Okay. Yeah, I don't think they had any change requests.
Yeah.
Why did, why did the selects have to wait thirty days?
Um, you know, I was just looking up the, up the adoption list, um, and...
It is a long time.
I'm not actually seeing that in the adoption checklist, that's what I was instructed verbally by Kevin today. He was like, remember, you have a forty, a thirty-day dead zone between submission and, like, absolutely.
Okay, well, you know, it's, it's fine, because they can't, they can't warn it any sooner anyway, so it's not, it's not an issue, it's just interesting.
Yeah. So if they adopt that soon after that, that will fit into the end of your year plans? Okay.
That'd be great for us.
All right.
I mean, they really, they really need to do it by the end of December, but I'm trying to, I'm trying to, I don't want us, I don't want us to be having our hearing on Christmas, you know, that's crazy.
Yeah, that won't be happening.
Everybody checks out after December tenth?
Well, not, not, yeah, yeah, well, there's that, but there's also, you know, it is possible that someone will come to a hearing with something that they want, that they want to change.
Right.
I mean, we can't rule that out.
Right, yeah, but it's simple to do that, should be.
I think they have to send it back to us, and we have to, you know what I'm saying, so, yeah, not so, not so simple.
Rem, yeah. Yeah, all right, anyway.
They don't have to send it back to you, if there are substantial changes, if there are substantial changes beyond, like, typos, right? If it changes the meaning of the bylaw, then they don't have to send it back to planning commission to actually work on it, it's just that the select board has to have another hearing with all the requisite warning time. Um, and they have to notify planning commission, so they'll send you a copy, but you don't have to actually, like, make any decisions. At that point, after you submit it to select board, it's there, it's, Kevin likes to say, they have complete ownership.
It's there, it becomes theirs.
Yeah.
It's theirs, okay, okay, okay.
Is there any kind of appeal period or rights from anyone to, if the select board says we're going to adopt, they adopt it? Is there a, is that the end of it, or is there...
I'm not aware of any appeals process.
Yeah.
I mean, that, but that's why she was saying we need, we have to have a good folder for showing what we did to...
Yeah, yeah.
That, that we, that it was properly adopted.
Paper trail, right.
Right, exactly.
So some of the community has no, if they don't like something in it, they have no recourse.
So sad, 'cause there were several opportunities, right.
Yeah, I mean, even if they avail themselves to that opportunity, say they go to the select board and say, I don't want fifty-foot buffer on streams.
Right.
And, and that's what they get anyway.
Right.
Yeah, it's okay.
Okay.
They can, they can not elect us next time.
Right. Mine's up in March. If anyone was curious, anyway.
Have you found a replacement?
You know what, why can't we do, have that as a requirement? If you want to get off the board, you have to find your own replacement.
I like that requirement.
Why not? I remember John Allen did, much to Greg's chagrin, but anyway, we're keeping Sarah longer than she has.
And, 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 okay. All right, so, well, we want to make sure Sarah's happy. Do you have what you need?
I'm just realizing that you made some decisions tonight, but you don't have quorum.
No, we did, the only decision we made was to get, was to keep what you have, that we made one decision, which was, which was to override that one thing on the, on the, the only decision we made was...
You decided that you, in fact, did not want to add a contractor yard to be permitted?
Yes.
So that was a decision you made today? You also said that, contrary to your original instruction of deleting heavy industry from prohibited, you wanted it to be... No, sorry, that's correct, that, that confirmed, that's the same thing, so the only change was making it conditional.
The only, the only change was to stay with...
Which is the existing language, yes.
Yeah, stay with the existing language.
Okay, I see what you're saying, okay, yeah, I'm with you.
We changed, no change.
Okay.
All right, so, okay, so, so Sarah, are you, you don't need, okay.
I'm good, thanks, Sarah.
Good, thank you.
We don't really need to meet tomorrow.
We do not.
Okay.
What do you do with that, warned?
You know, was it warned for tomorrow?
Well, yeah, I had to, I had to put up a warning. Just put up a note, this is, meeting canceled.
Okay.
Right? I don't see.
They had their opportunity to tie.
Uh, uh, and, and actually, there's one down there I can write canceled, write on it.
I took that, oh, no, for tomorrow, not this, today's.
Well, I'll make...
Yeah, I, I might be able to write it on all of them, but anyway.
I will make the motion to adjourn then.
Okay, okay.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Oh, we, oh, we don't have a quorum, so we can't adjourn.
Maybe we did, maybe none of this.